I'd like to call this the committee of the whole meeting to order. Our mayor, Ives, is out of town at a meeting and since it's my month as the acting mayor, I have drawn the shortstop to chair this meeting. So I'd like to ask for the agenda to be adopted.
Move.
Okay, move along with the agenda here. First of all, Hillmore delegations.
I will vote for it.
You don't have to.
No minutes from the last meeting to be received, nor department meetings. So we'll move to staff reports first. And the first staff report is a regional district referral in regards to the rezoning of the Courtney and District Fish and Game Protective Association asking for a rezoning. I just want to read this first and then ask our CIO to speak to it. Planning Report, PR 15-6 of the Local Government Referral Zoning Bylaw Amendment by the Courtney and District Fish and Game Protective Association. They've asked that the Comox Valley Regional District be advised that as detailed in the March 25, 2015 Planning Report, PR 15-6, insufficient information has been provided to assess the potential impacts of the proposed zoning amendment in relation to the following: A, regional growth strategy policies, MG 3A-1 and 5B-1, and B, the rural Comox Valley Official Community Plan, Bylaw Number 337, 2014 watershed management and protection policies 1 and 2. So I'll turn it over to our CIO to please comment briefly on why they are requesting or why we are requesting, as usual, districts requesting a re-referral of the zoning application.
Thank you, Your Worship. In a nutshell, this matter was referred to the town as its part of our watershed and they're looking for input from us. The concern that we have brought forward is that there isn't enough information for us to provide a proper response. And as staff have pointed out in the report, under the Comox Valley OCP and the watershed management and protection policies, it requires that the applicant, in this case, of a rezoning would have hired a qualified professional where they would assess potential water quality and quantity impacts and submit an onsite drainage report with recommendations to ensure the pre-development or natural hydrology regime is maintained and restored prior to development approval. So, as well as using rainwater management techniques and design. So we don't have enough information to provide council with adequate response. So we're saying, send it back, let them do the work, and then re-refer the application.
Do you have any questions from council in regards to that?
Sounds like the right step.
So can we move one to it, same time?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Yep. So a little motion for number one, number two to be approved? All's in favor? Motion's carried. Okay, item two is the food court feasibility comments on Marina Park. We have a report, most of you, hopefully all received the report from our Al Fraser, from the park's department in regards to that. And before we look at this, I'll just give a brief history about this. As you all remember, Councilor Arnett brought this concept to council for consideration, and it was sent back by council, back to staff for staff review, analysis, and feasibility. We have now a report back from that today, and you've all had a chance to look at the report. I'm wondering if Al Fraser, if you want to make any more comments to your report before we go around the table and have council report it.
Not really, Your Worship. I think we've captured the bulk of both sides of the argument here. If there's any questions of council, specific to any of these comments, I'd be more than willing to share.
Are there any questions from council for Al Fraser in regards to the report? Okay. In the report, it suggested that feedback from the BIA would be advisable, and I attempted to get some feedback from the BIA on short notice as I got the report just earlier this week. And we did get some feedback from the BIA, but I'd like to read a statement from the president of the BIA after he received feedback from his members, if I can. And it comes from Richard DeLuca, the BIA president. Hello, Hugh. As you can see, we have a strong debate coming in on both sides of the issue, and given the very tight timeline, I don't think the BIA is in a position to give decisive input to council on this issue. As the BIA, we wish to speak to council with a singular voice, such that whenever we are given the opportunity to provide input, council members will know we have given the question at hand suitable due diligence. If council still wishes feedback from the BIA on this issue, we require more time to consider our position. Should you wish to put forth any feedback forwarded directly to you by any of our board members as individuals, please seek their approval to do so. And also, please ensure council is aware that these individuals are speaking for themselves and not the BIA at this time. Now, some individuals did write in and have given permission to have their comments be read by you, two in particular, and I wanted to pass those on to council for consideration. Before we go around the table here in regards to that, there was another suggestion I want you to keep in mind from the end of the report, that the feedback from the nautical days committee may be advisable as well in regards to this. And I'll come back to that after we get a chance for comments from council. So are there any comments from council here? We'll start with the person who brought this to our attention, Councilor Arnett.
Thank you, Your Worship. As I said in the motion, that the town in Comox temporarily convert five parking spaces adjacent to the waterfront on the east parking lot for food craft court for the summer season 2015. We already have a bylaw in place for application by application that food vendors can come into the arena. So this isn't about allowing food vendors into the arena. This is about having them in a designated spot. You know, we've all seen in the past where, you know, one trailer over here and another trailer over here. What I'm talking about is organizing this. Make it look like it's something that's part of the park, not leftovers from nautical days or from some event, but something that belongs down here. And again, this is just a temporary thing, right? We're just looking at what kind of business this can generate. And I've seen the comments from some of the individuals you're referring to, and, you know, it's fair enough. But what I would like to do is, I'd like to refer formally back to the BIA for their full comments from all the membership, and bring this back in two weeks. Next committee of the whole will have comments. And I'd also like to ask that those out there in the public make their comments too, and, you know, we get a full dialogue on this. And I think this can really be a nice addition to our Marina area without taking away anything from anybody.
Well, I'll just respond to that, if I may, before allowing other councillors to know what to say on this, is that there was a late submission from one of the BIA members and who has a business down here, Compass Ventures, and it's relevant to what Councilor Arnett just said. If I may, I'm just going to read it now because it may touch with the suggestion you made. This is from Stuart Robinson from Compass Ventures, and he gave permission to have this read. He said, "I don't think it's a simple yes or no answer. I am in support of more food vendors in the Marina Park. However, I think that the way that this is approached is key to it being successful part of building a community field in the Marina area, as well as a traffic builder for the downtown. My areas of concern would be having the vendors in an appropriate area, the quality of the contracted businesses, the aesthetics and the look of the park area, as well as potential conflicts with events in the Marina. I also think that the stakeholders in the Marina Park area should all be consulted throughout the process." This process, and I would suggest that through the BIA Marina Enhancement Committee, this consultation could be accomplished. Considering the impact of this decision, perhaps council members could attend the next meeting, which will be scheduled for the week of April 13, perhaps April 15, with all the stakeholders invited. And that may be something that may help. So, Councilor Grant first? Yeah, Councilor Arnett?
Okay, yeah, so just on that, I too read that, and I like the fact that we're going to have a dialogue. But I think if we're going to have a dialogue, we should have that here. We need to have it transparent. We need to have everybody seeing or hearing what we're discussing instead of going to their meeting. Perhaps we need to have them come here, we need to have the delegation, if that's what they want. I think it's all about transparency for myself.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Grant.
Well, I think this is getting to be a far bigger issue than I ever would have dreamed of. To me, we're about to, if we get funding, we're going to venture onto making some big changes down in our park. I would hate to see us get this all set up and get everybody all organizing and have to go back and say, oh, you're out now. So to me, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to be spending all of the time and effort and energy. I think we've got a policy going down there right now where we have applications, you can come, you can put them on. It's a bit of a stopgap, but I would suspect that we would be getting on with doing some things down in our Marina by next summer. So we're talking about one small season here. And it seems like an awful lot of effort to go to and a whole lot of shenanigans to end up with something that could actually be a problem for us if it's successful. So, I don't know, I kind of think that maybe we should just leave well enough alone for now if somebody wants to come and apply. I also spoke to a guy that's on the Food Truck, is it Food Truck Association for Vancouver Island? He figures probably one or two vendors down here would be about what would be viable financially, and that's if they work. When I look at what Al's got on here, he's talking about no power, it's going to be a very limited number of people that could actually make this work. So I think I'd be more in favor of just leaving it as it is if a couple of vendors want to come down and apply for now. If in fact we don't get the funding to do our changes to the park that we have in mind, then I think this is a debate that would be good next season, or if we don't get the funding. Because I think there is a need, and I agree with what you're trying to do here, I just think that to get it all organized for one small season isn't making a lot of sense for me, especially like this is getting to be a really a bigger issue than I think it was ever intended to be, so.
Thank you, Councilor Grant. Any other councillors or can I go around the table then? Councilor Grant.
Given the material that we've had to make reference to this afternoon, I can't think of anyone who doesn't want all kinds of fun and excitement and food and music and things down at the Marina. I mean, that's pretty obvious, and of course we would want that. But ever since coming on council, the one thing I've heard time and time again is we want to vitalize our downtown and enhance our Marina. If we move too fast, I would be concerned that in fact we're not going to give that kind of vitalization to our downtown before considering all of those points who were made by some of the BIA members. I think we have to listen to the BIA and the other stakeholders before making a decision because this can impact too heavily on our vitalization plan, and who knows? It can either put us many steps forward, but it could also put us several steps back. So I strongly suggest that we think very carefully before we can do it.
Any other comments, Councilor?
Yes, and I certainly wasn't supportive of this idea, and it seemed like a simple, just create a little more space for a couple more vans. However, it does seem to have grown, and there is debate on either side. We've already had staff time on a report, and other reports, more staff time, and estimated cost of $1,500 to $2,000 to put this in place. So it's sort of grown. The idea's, I think, has taken on too much of a life of its own, and I think the comments that have been made, that if we don't get the grants, then yes, this is great, it's worth putting the effort in. And whatever we do, we want to make a good job of it. So I think that see what comes out of the grants. It's been mentioned this would be one year only if we're successful, and if we're not, then, you know, we'll do a good job on it. But it seems that everyone's rushing about trying to get their comments in, and there's this sense of summer's coming, and so I would be willing to wait and see what happens with grant applications.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Smith?
I don't think I've got anything particularly new to add to the discussion, except to say that I would be really concerned about taking away the parking and all those kinds of things for the one year and have us do something different the following year. So I think we would be well advised to wait and do it properly and have good discussion with the BIA. You know, if we're trying to develop relationships, we should be prepared.
Okay, Councilor Arnett, back to you. If you wanted to make a motion from here.
Yeah. Well, you know, I think if it was successful, then it's a winner for us. I brought this up in January, and now we're just getting around to it. And I cautioned us at that time that if we take too long, that this could get buried. The changes that we're talking about, there's no infrastructure changes, you know, I've stated that before. We're talking about five parking spaces. Maybe next year at this time, that, those parking spaces aren't going to be there anyway because we're looking at some type of redesign down there. So I don't think we're taking anything away from the park, I think we're adding to it. You know, I hear what a couple people from the BIA have said. I haven't heard from everybody on the BIA, I haven't heard from, you know, a cross-section of them. I have heard a lot from the community though, and I've said to our deputy CIO today, clerk, that, you know, I forwarded some comments on from the Eagles website and on their Facebook, and there was a lot of positive comments. There was 35 likes, people liked this idea. And again, we're not making a whole bunch of changes, we're putting up a couple wooden barricades, we're putting a couple, we're putting maybe, maybe two more carts down there. We're looking at push carts, we're not looking at trailers, we're not looking at trucks, we're looking at push carts or a little boulder type of trailer. It's trying something in our community, because I've heard this time and time again, is that we're not doing anything in our community. Or we are, we're making changes, but people want to see something. And I think this change, that work that I'm proposing, and I hope I get council's buy-in, is just giving something to the community that they've asked for, they've asked to see something. And you know what? At the end of the season, it doesn't work out, then you pick up those barricades and you sweep the parking lot, and it's all good. If comes July, August, it's not working, you move those barricades and the five parking spots are back. We're not, we're not talking about changing the infrastructure, and I stress that. I'm talking about giving something to the residents of Comox, to the valley, that they've been asking for. They've been asking for something down there. And we don't even know for sure that we're getting this park change down there. It all hinges on what happens in the fall with the Western Economic Diversification Grant. So then, if that doesn't happen, then we've gone another year without doing anything. And I think people are tired of that, they want to see something. And this something is so minor, $1,500 to $2,000, we gave that to a grant to a fellow a month ago. You know, that's not going to make or break Comox, but what it is going to do, it's going to tell people that yes, Comox is willing to look at some options, to look at change, and it wants to look forward. And that's what I'm putting out there, so thank you.
Okay, then, Councilor Arnett, the town staff has asked direction from council here. Did you want to put that into a motion then?
Well, as I said earlier, you know, I don't think we should be upsetting any group. If we come back, get BIA to give us their full comments, two weeks, bring it back. I don't want anybody to feel that they're pressured to make any kind of decision. I mean, I think I know what the decision should be, but, so let's refer formally back to BIA for their full comments and discuss this in two weeks' time.
So your motion is that you would refer back to BIA to hear their advice on this issue?
Their comments, yes.
Their comments?
Yeah. And meantime, I hope that the good residents of Comox and the Comox Valley give us their comments as well. And I'd be more than happy for the deputy clerk to pass out the information of the comments that so far they have received.
Thank you. Shelley, did you get that down as a motion?
A short succinct motion.
I don't sound like that.
That's what I'm voting for. Could we have a succinct?
I'm going to get Shelley to read back the motion for us then.
The motion, as I originally heard it, and I'll need clarification on this, is that the matter be referred formally back to the BIA for their comments, and then brought back to the next committee of the whole meeting in two weeks. Now I'm not sure that that ends up.
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Okay, do we have a second here on that motion?
I'll second it for a discussion on the table. And I, it seems to be something like topsy, it's growing, and if we're going to be consulting with the BIA, you know, our report points out that the grid users may have some comments on it, because they will be impacted by that. The Marina tenants would be losing their existing loading day, they may wish to have comments. It just, you know, where does it end? I think that's, you know, how much staff time do we want to take? I think initially it was a great idea and it seemed very simple, and one of the things that I found in local government is that, you know, the wheels of government do move slowly. And I think that, you know, part of that is to make sure that the decisions we make are wise and the money we spend is well thought out, and that we've got the good air view. So I'm just wondering how much further we want to take it, you know, how many more staff records, and we have this process ahead of us, you know, let's stick with the process that we have.
Thank you, Councilor, please. Councilor Grant.
I was just going to mention that we have a, as much as it may not be a perfect process, we have one now, so we're not precluding anybody from coming down there and applying. If one or two food vendors wanted to go down there, I think we have a process now that would allow that. And I think we could do a much better job of this after we know what's going to happen with our enhancement project. So I would stick with my original thoughts that we should put this off and see where we go with that.
Any other comments?
No, I've made my comments.
We'll bring that to a bolt then. All those in favor of the motion? All those against? The motion is defeated, and however, as Councilor Grant says, there is an opportunity still for people to apply. There is a meeting in the first week of April to perhaps plant the seed with the BIA group in regards to this down the road, and I'll share that with you, Councilor Arnett, after the meeting with the BIA. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the mosquito abatement program affecting Losal Road, Kai Bay Road, and Wireless Road areas. And I'll turn that over to our CIO just to comment on that.
Thank you, Your Worship. And what I'll do is I'll ask our park superintendent, Al Fraser, to speak to this as he's leading this initiative and was leading the meeting that was held on Wednesday as well. Thank you. So last year, we were faced with a number of inquiries, complaints, observations, general observations from citizens down in the Kai Bay Wireless Road area, and a few concerned citizens from the CVRD. So it was regarding mosquito, aggressive mosquito behavior in those areas. When we first started fielding the calls from people, we tried to compile the initial information and kind of get a data set as to where these hotspots were located throughout the area, and found that the genuine areas of concern were what we'll call the slough, which is the depressed area in front of Kai Bay, proper down by the park. The areas out on Simon Crescent, where there's noticeable standing water in both the ditches and some of the adjacent low-lying areas in the CVRD. And also comments from Bob Seifert and his staff out of Seifert Farms on the Nag Road area. At first, the calls started trickling in, and then we realized that the extent of the area affected was quite broad, and that the numbers of complaints would eventually start building, and that's what indeed happened. In reaction to this, myself and Vince Van Togren, who's a sustainability analyst with the CVRD, got together because it is an interjurisdictional problem, and approached to come up with a sensible education outreach and abatement program. So Vince and myself sat down with Rupert Wong, who is a RP bio with a company in Courtney called Current Environmental. Some of you may know Rupert, some may not. We've worked, both the CVRD and the town in Comox and other jurisdictions have worked with their firm on a number of different issues, so we're very familiar with he and his counterparts at the company. So we engaged Current Environmental to come in and do some data sampling for us and try to come up with a sensible approach of how we're going to, A, identify the areas, how we're going to map them, how we're going to use resources of both the town and the CVRD to come up with control measures. And so we thought the most sensible thing to do, once we, when we were compiling the information, the areas and names of the complainants, was to bring those complainants, concerned citizens, together and have an open house and discuss it in a room where we could all look each other eye to eye, introduce ourselves, and explain, A, a little bit about the science behind what we're doing, and a little bit about countermeasures and other things that can be employed from a personal standpoint, so as a property owner, to help reduce and mitigate some of the problems that we've experienced. We held a meeting last Monday over at the Recreation Center. Counselor McKinnon was in the audience, as were probably, I'm going to guess, around 30 people, some from the CVRD, of course, and some from the town as well. Myself, as a staff representative of Vince and the CVRD, and Current Environmental at their staff. Current Environmental ran the meeting, they did the introductions. Vince and I both spoke on some of the issues that we're faced with as local governments in terms of regulatory requirements and trying to alleviate some of the fears and temper some of the knee-jerk reactions to what are being construed as effective and immediate countermeasures to help abate this health abatement program. And what I'm getting at is people wanting to crack open the berm and let the intertidal waters flush to and fro and things like that. So there's a number of questions that were generated, a number of answers that were given, and certainly a lot of uncertainty still lie out there. The concentrations of mosquitoes in the area after the data sampling was done, in certain areas is extremely high, and if those larval counts turn into the adult stage, we could be in for a real mess down there. There's no risk of health, there's not a health risk here. This particular mosquito, Aedes dorcelis, is benign in that regard, but it is very aggressive, so it's a nuisance mosquito, and people are generally being affected by it down there. The slough, which is in our jurisdiction, in the town's jurisdiction, and I don't know if slough is the right term, but that's what we're referring to in the correspondence and any of the baseline information, is in terrible shape. A, because it's full of woody debris from storm surge over the years, very difficult place to get in and out of, both by foot and Very difficult place to get in and out of, both by foot and to access by machinery. It's large, and of course, it's fronting a number of homes. So, there's some interesting dynamics about what can and cannot be done down there. And we're just trying to put all that together in, in haste, because these little guys are getting ready to emerge fairly quickly. I know that was a whole bunch of rambling, but I was trying to capture as much as I could, because this has come out, we've, this has come out as fairly, it's not blindsided us, but the amount, or the degree of the, of the areas affected, and, and the number of water bodies that we've identified within these areas that have larvae in them, is very, very alarming. So what I'm getting at is there's a lot of work ahead of us here, and we don't really have the prescriptions in front of us right at this moment. One of the things we'll have to do is look at manipulating a certain part of that slough area, manipulating some of the sand and woody debris in that area to try to physically cap and preclude these standing water bodies to exist.
Just to add as well is that I did a sort of head count, there was about forty-plus people there, and you're right, both from the regional district and, and citizens. And Al, when I got all of it, there was three points that, that were made strongly, and that was that, for citizens, that they were introducing ways that you could become involved in the study. Secondly, is that they set up a line of, and provided a structure for lines of communication. And what could we say to residents of the town of Comox that, that had mosquito problems surfaced this year to a really bad degree? Can you walk us through the lines of communication you'd like us to refer people to in the community?
Certainly. So Kern's Environmental, who are the boots-on-the-ground agency that were, that were contracting to, to do the larval counts and such, have, they have a website, they have their business cards available with them when they're in the field. So Caitlin O'Neill, who's one of the field techs, is coordinating the communications package with the citizens of the affected area. So they're going to be the ones going door-to-door, property-to-property, and, and helping compile all the information. So anybody that's willing to participate in the program can do so through contacts with Caitlin. Any other, any, I'm, I'm a point of, a direct point of contact for the town, and Vince Van Togren is a direct contact with the CVRD. The meeting that we held, we figured that there were enough people in that meeting represented there, that signed up at the end of the meeting, that are going to disseminate the information to others that may be away and such. I need to talk with Rupert and Caitlin to see if they're going to be handling any form of, or passing on any formal updates to us. And if we do get formal updates from them, as to where we're at in the state, as we can add that to our website as well. But communications, by and large, are being handled by Kern's Environmental on the ground.
Okay, thank you very much. And my sense of it was, is that people were really impressed and thankful that the regional district and the town of Comox was taking the bold bite off of corn, so to speak, and attempts to address the problem and involve, involve the public in it, so thank you for that. Any other questions for Al in regards to mosquitoes? We'll move along with the agenda then to, there is no correspondence, and unless I'm wrong, we don't need to exclude the public? So, I'd like to, do you have any questions from the press? Quite disappointing. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, please. One second? Thank you.